Okay. Do I just call this meeting ordered, please begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by mission under God, in divulgation of the number of persons involved.
Who's through, please?
Councilmember Barretts.
President.
Councilmember Cabazayo.
President.
Councilmember Dakmak.
Mayor Proketa.
Geller.
President.
Mayor Kierzke.
President.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
Councilmember Seago.
President.
Okay, the next item, setting of the agenda, do we have any changes, Steve?
We do, Mayor, we'd like to remove eight A from tonight's agenda and we'll be putting that on the June agenda.
Okay. The next item, item five is approval of the minutes of the April sixteenth regular meeting on pages three to nine. Interviewing of the satisfactory need a motion to approve. Move.
Second.
Any further discussion or changes? Now, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If the next item is receiving the different boards, commissions, and committee minutes in the public domain, do you have a motion to accept in the public domain?
No.
All of the favors, say aye.
Aye.
Next item, seven is a swearing of our newest to be news officer.
Ken?
Sure.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for attending tonight's meeting, and I've said this before and I'll say it again, really one of the best part of my jobs is when we get to introduce our new staff. And tonight, we're really excited to show you guys Sean, introduce you to him. He's going to be such a huge compliment to our department. But before I get started talking about Sean, he'd like to acknowledge his family and that they've supported him here the last, really four or five months since we started the process, but really the last seventeen months. We'd like to introduce you to his wife Katie real quick. Katie is a firefighter paramedic from the city of Freeher. Privacy mess with Sean at, uh, his son Jamison, his mom Christine, and his grandmother Carol. Well, thank you all for sharing your time. Real quick, a flip file on Sean, he graduated from Anchor Bay High School in 2015 and currently resides in Iowa Township. After high school, he went to Oakland University Community College where he studied fire science, got a degree. And then from there, he went to Dorsey and worked in the paramedic program. After the paramedic program, he had a small stint with the Detroit Fire Department and their EMS division, Bedstar. And he settled into the TriHospital EMS, which is out of Port Huron, which is a very active ambulance service. And he also works for the Iowa Township Fire Department, other fire rescue team. As you know, recently, just last week, he graduated from McComb Police Academy. It was seventeen weeks of training. From here, he'll go into a twelve-month FTO program where he'll get complete supervision for the next twelve months. And we will groom him to our way of life and our routines here. When Sean's name first surfaced, Lieutenant Tony Spinney came to me and says, hey, I got a guy. And he was really super excited. And so we said, come on and bring him in for a ride along. Let's make sure Gross Point Shores is what he's looking for, and this is what we're looking for as far as an employee. And right from the very first day he got here, it was real comfortable. As you can see, my staff is here, these are the people that work with him, they're trained, they're quickly becoming friends. And again, it's a huge compliment when we can hire such a fine guy, has a family, who's a good son, has a good father, and he will be a good employee. Honestly, I don't have anything else to say, I'm real excited, I'd like the mayor to come down and swim in. His wife Katie is going to put this badge on, why don't you stand up here for everybody? Katie, why don't you come down here real quick?
And Sean, please raise your right hand.
Yes, sir.
I do hereby solemnly swear and affirm.
I do hereby solemnly swear and affirm.
That I'll support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Michigan.
Of the state of Michigan.
And then I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
In the position as a public safety officer.
In the position of a public safety officer.
I will enforce the ordinances of the village of Gross Point Shores.
I will enforce the ordinances of the village of Gross Point Shores.
Of Michigan City.
Of Michigan City.
And the counties of Wayne and McComb.
Of the counties of Wayne and McComb.
To the best of my ability.
Of the best of my ability.
Effective today, May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Effective today, May twenty-fourth, twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
As the chief said, this is the best part, it's his job, also, it's the best part of my job. Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you all so much.
All right, the next item is board appointments for the tree board. Dr. Keshet, twenty-two resident of Gross Point Shores, is he here today?
He's not.
Again, I'm looking for an endorsement to allow him to be on the tree board, is there a motion?
Aye, so we deliver a vote, so.
Second.
And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, welcome, Dr. And next item, public comment on agenda items. You have any public comments? All right, hearing on that.
There's some.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think the water bill's on the agenda tonight, but I found this handout that was distributed to meet the mayor very informative. And it's really shocking when you look at how much more we're paying for water and sewer than other cities. Also, when you look at the cost of our water and sewer and the three-plus million dollars that the city takes in every year, you know, what happens to the rest of that money? It almost looks like it's a closet tax increase. So I hope we have a much more thorough explanation of the water bill situation, what the options are to mitigate the escalating costs of that over time. I think this is a very informative document and ought to be distributed to every citizen in the city.
Good, thank you, thank you, Dr.
Kevin Hanlon, seventy-three, Sunningdale. Kevin Hanlon, seventy-three, Sunningdale. I was pleased to, and thank you, counsel, for taking my comments. I was pleased to attend a town hall just recently. And the majority of the time at the town hall was, in fact, on the water and sewage and issues there. There were a lot of good, there was a lot of good discussion, a lot of good ideas that were floated at the thing. At the end of the meeting, or near the end of the meeting, it was suggested that there would be a, because it's such a vast problem, and it's on the minds, I would say, of the majority, if not almost all of the mem, all of the citizenry of our community. And there was a suggestion to form a committee to look into it, it's such a large, complex issue, and to investigate some of the, follow down some of the things that were brought up, the items that were brought up at that meeting, and to investigate it further and try to get into some root causes and maybe consider changes in the way we charge for our water and how the whole process works. I think it should be investigated from a, really, it's root causes or the root, the root problems, and should be thoroughly investigated and not a superficial investigation. And I don't mean investigation like some people think, like, you know, on legal terms. I mean delve into the problem. I think that the, I suggested that the group would be, consist of expertise that we may have in our community and a call to the community to see if there's any expertise in the area of water, civil engineering, attorneys, and the like. I think it should be represent, there should be representatives there of the community at large for, to keep the community up to date on a, on a real-time basis. And I think it's a real problem that if we don't act on it, it could be bubbling up and create a real turmoil in our community and cause some divisiveness in the community. We've had some of those problems in the past and no one enjoys that. And I think if, the best way to do it is to address it head-on and be honest and open. If we discover problems, fine, see if we can correct those problems. The way that the, the, our community is financed is in large measure on the back of the water, which was alluded to by Mr. Lee, or Dr. Lee. And that may very well be the only way that we can finance and pay for a lot of the nice facilities, a lot of the things we have in our community. However, we may find an opportunity to cut some of those back or reassign or realign things and that nature. And I most, and foremost really, is the community at large should be aware of what's going on and how this, how we finance our community, how we do the water bill, sewage, how it's handled. And frankly, until this town hall, until I met with Mike Way, until I saw some of the finances that were distributed, frankly, I was quite shocked at the way it's done, and I was unaware. And I would think that I represent the majority of the citizenry of our, our community. And I think first and foremost, there needs to be transparency. Light shine, shine on these issues can, you know, help lead to improvement in that area. And, but most importantly is transparency of how we do things. And have it go up to a vote or whatever it takes to make sure that there's a buy-in for our community of the way we currently run and finance our community. And I think some things are done differently. If you talk to your neighbors and the other Gross Points, you'll find that they have a substantially lower water bill. And there's a reason for that. And we need to discover what the reason might be. If our water bill has to be what it has to be, we need to justify that, and it needs to be justified to the citizenry. So I'm calling for a, for you, the mayor, to make that committee, to offer a committee, to develop committee like a blue ribbon community, or committee, with the public participation and try to resolve this very grave problem. Yes, so.
Thank you, Dr. Any more public comments?
Well, I'm Clyde Sutton, I've lived on North Deepland for going on twenty-five years now. I think Gross Point Shores is one of the best places to live in the world. But one thing that's detracting is our water rates. Our water rates are high, they're the highest of any of the points. They're anywhere from sixty percent to two-hundred-and-fifty percent higher than our neighbors in the other Gross Points. This isn't just a matter of high rates, it seems to be, it is unjust, they're unjustly high. We need to challenge the water board, the board of commissioners of this issue. The assumption that every gallon of water we use becomes a gallon of sewage is not correct. This ignores the fact that we use our water to water our lawns and our landscaping. We can easily figure out the difference between what we use in the winter and the extra that we use in the summer. Now, I've heard that there's a proposal for an eight-million-dollar sewage storage facility. That's something like over eleven-hundred households, that's seven-thousand dollars per household plus interest. On a twenty-year amortization at five percent, it's about fifty bucks a month, six-hundred dollars a year. That's really not helping the issue of the high water rates. Now, one thing we can do, we can continue to emphasize the benefits of using our water at the correct times of day. Setting our sprinklers for night when the water usage is low is working, I understand, and we need to continue to emphasize that. We need to let people know this isn't just for the well-being of their water bill, but also for the well-being of the entire community. Please try to correct this, it's hurting our home values. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, my name is Rob Fishman, I live at five ninety-nine Ballantyne in Haddonsville for over twenty years. But I've been on the points since nineteen eighty-three. I'm going to probably say some of the stuff that's already been said, but I just want to go on record is I think our water bills are ridiculous. It's to the point where I will not water my grass, I have not for the last two years. We have a gorgeous home on Ballantyne. My wife will be out in the front yard doing her flowers and people walk by and tell them, she'll, they'll tell her how beautiful our home is. My grass can turn yellow, I don't care. I'm not going to spend twelve-hundred dollars, which I did two years ago, and I'm sure they're more expensive now, so I couldn't tell you what it would have been this past summer because I didn't water my grass. I haven't watered it for two years, it's just too expensive. A neighbor three houses down had a four-thousand-dollar water bill two winters, two summers ago. My neighbor two houses over had a twenty-five-hundred-dollar water bill. My wife and I don't have anybody living at home, and we had a twelve-hundred-dollar water bill two summers ago. It's ridiculous. You water the grass, the grass, the water in the grass evaporates. Why do we have to pay sewage fee for the water that we use to water our lawns? So it's a beautiful community, my grass will be yellow, because I'm just not going to water it. And I just want to go on record, we have the highest water bills of all the surrounding cities. There's more than St. Clair's shores, Glinton Township, McComb, Roseville, everywhere. And I just don't understand why. We winter in Florida, we've gone for almost three months this winter and my water bill came and it was two-hundred-and-forty-five or two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. I understand there's administrative fees, seems to be, be a lot of money when I shut the water off in my house. So there's no way that a toilet's running, the water is shut off to the house, and the bill was still two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. So we have to do something, as I just wanted to go on record and say what everybody else is saying. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Any more public comment? If not, the next item on the agenda is our public hearing. Now, this is the second public hearing we've had, plus we had a town hall recently to discuss all the other things, the budget, the water and sewer rates.
Presented in front of you, I included the handouts for this evening that followed the slides presentation itself. The, we'll go through it step by step and it addresses all the concerns that have been pointed out in our meeting this evening, and water concerns and rate methodology and so forth. First of all, the highlights for the year overall. If you'll look at the first page, this represents the highlights from the overall budget itself. This encompasses all the key funds. You'll note, there's a military reduction, we're lowering the military from eighteen-point-oh-eight to approximately seventeen-point-eight. With Public Safety Department hence getting an officer finally so we can reduce his overtime. We're increasing it by one officer from fifteen to sixteen. Expanded street improvements, there have been reserves in place that Steve and Mike are working diligently to expand the repairs that are needed in the various areas of the community. And that's a significant increase from the prior year, the current year's budget. Increased pension funding, the actuary recommending improving our, updating our mortality tables. Then in turn affects the amount we need to contribute to stay at funding levels we hope to be at. So the current budget recognizes those new mortality tables and reflects an increase in contributions to that fund will stay ahead of the curve. Water rate and sewer rate reductions, we'll get into that further in the meeting relative to when we get to the water and sewer fund. Your current water usage rate is six dollars and fifty cents, it's being lowered to six dollars. The sewer rate itself was at ten-oh-four, is being lowered to eight-oh-four. So between the two, the usage rate is being lowered two dollars and fifty cents. Lastly, expanded capital improvements, there is a donation received by the community that was transferred to a future capital, for future capital improvement projects. It's a little over a million-two earning interest, we expect you're going to have a million-three or north of that for improvements going forward. And increased general fund reserves, we're on target that actually add to the reserves within the general fund. How much, we don't know at this point, because this is only, we've got May and June billing yet to come. On the next slide, you'll see our key, our major funds, the general fund, these are general operations of the community, the major street fund for maintenance and repairs of those streets, local street fund, debt service fund, and of course, the water and sewer fund. The general fund shows a balance of revenues and expenses. We anticipate reserves will go up slightly based on this year's completion. Major street fund and local street fund will be relying on reserves that have been in place to expand street resurfacing for those two, for those two projects, for those projects. The debt service fund, you'll see four-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand dollars is the current revenue, likewise, four-hundred-and-ninety-one expense. That fund, this will be the last year, you'll see that is village that is collected to pay for two thousand thirteen bond. This is the last year coming up, that will fully retire that bond and that will be removed from the village rates going forward. The water and sewer fund, you'll see a balanced fund, three million in revenues, three million in expenses, and reserves, it's difficult to estimate just what we're going to be on reserves, we have a healthy amount of reserves. And depending on the weather and amount of rainfall and usage, we see in the next two months, in our next billing cycle, I have a better idea on that. Moving to the next slide. This is the breakdown of the actual millage rate. I noticed, I noted that we're going down to seventeen-point-eight-oh-two-nine mills. Thirteen mills is for operating purposes, two-point-three-three-three-four is dedicated to refuse collection. Pension is going up from one-point-two to one-point-seven to maintain the funding levels we had. I mentioned relative mortality table acceptance. And lastly, the debt fund, this will be the final of the point-six-five mills, that will come off next year. This slide depicts how much, how much the community receives by, by type of millage. General operations, four-point-seven million, refuse services, eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand, the pension expenditures of six-thirty-nine, and the total for the general fund of those three, total six-point-two million, and then the debt retirement amount that I had mentioned that will be coming off. Where do your tax dollars go? This is based on which jurisdictions collect the money. You'll note on the far left, George collects thirty-two percent of the tax dollar. If you'll look at the second from the left and the last column, those are county and SET, state education tax collections, combined a total of forty-one percent, and then the balances for the school, library at twenty-seven percent. So basically, you get thirty, thirty-three cents on the dollar comes to the community itself for operations. General fund revenues, this chart depicts our revenue sources, again, the primary, primary revenue sources, of course, property taxes, that's consistent with prior years. There were some grant monies received last year. And other than that, the general fund revenues are pretty consistent. Taxes, then the rates are coming down, you'll see the percentage of revenue from taxes comparable to the current year. Expenses, this chart depicts where funds go within the general operational fund. You'll notice the purple on the bottom, approximately forty-three percent of that goes to the Public Safety Department. The next would be finance, which includes debt retirement and lease payments, our pension contribution, and our liability insurance. And then the next two principles are sanitation and public works. This chart reflects the distribution of wages within the general operating fund. Wages are a significant share of the costs. And by department, forty-three percent is spent within the Public Safety Department, sanitation, twelve percent, public works, twelve percent, elections, parks, et cetera, twelve percent, general administration, eight percent. So it gives you an idea where the staff costs are. General fund reserves, the community has set a benchmark of maintaining a twenty-five percent reserve balance. It's estimated after this year and with the completion of the current budget, to maintain in the neighborhood of a thirty-eight percent on the reserve balance. So it's a very healthy balance as the community goes, and gives you a little attitude in case some unexpected event arises. Major local streets, this simply depicts what is expected to be spent this year in fiscal twenty-four of two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars for street improvements, repairs, significant repairs and so on. And that will jump up to five-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand dollars next year. We're seeing about a two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar increase in attention of, or repairs of the street funds themselves. What seems to be the most interest is our water and sewer fund. You'll see estimated revenues are three million dollars. Both of this is collected through usage or utility fees of two-point-eight million dollars is the expectation. That fee collected will be dependent ultimately on the weather. One of the issues that arose that I know generated a lot of interest two years ago, September of twenty-two, you had an extremely dry year versus, let's say, as compared to September of twenty-three. Your billing was almost four-hundred-and-forty thousand more for that one quarter versus September twenty-three. Part of that's a result of your rate structure itself. There's a large share of, our major share of your rate has been predicated on the usage fee less on a flat operational fee. The shores does vary from other communities on that distribution. Comparing it to other communities as well, several communities, they include within their taxes funds to support the water and sewer fund. As an example, Gross Point Park reflects approximately one-point-seven million dollars in a bond through property taxes to pay for infrastructure improvements within the water and sewer fund. So sometimes it's difficult to compare apples to apples from one city to another. Typically, where the community has been heavy on is the usage fee versus the, the operational fee. Four years ago, your flat use, your flat operational fee was approximately two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars a billion. What's proposed is a hundred-and-twenty-one dollars with the new cycle and a lowering of the rates themselves from the six-fifty for water to six, and from ten-oh-four for sewer to eight. You'll see on the next slide. But you, the collections, you'll note that the water rate is going down, as I noted, to the six dollars a unit, sewer down to eight-oh-four a unit. And what has been discussed with the finance committee and the council within a workshop was creating a look-back adjustment. And what that would seek to address is when you have an unusually dry cycle where bills really spike up on residents, is allowing a cap, whereas taking into account whether it's their winter usage from residents or what the revenue requirements are for a particular year, there will happen.
Which is the next slide, that's the long slide.
They're all looking for it.
All right, the, so your estimated collections, you've got the rates, the operational fees will be a 121 flat fee, that's your operational, there's a bump up in that. But what was a greater adjustment is the reduction of the water and sewer usage fees. Typically, and I've seen residents' bills where they'll run $4, $500 for December billing, the same in the winter. A spike in billing and a very high spike in the September billing. What we're seeking to do, and it's an incremental change, I think in the right direction, is recognizing during these dry periods where we incur a lot of watering laws and so forth. Without that same amount of water going into the sewer system, as I was pointing out tonight, is a valid concern. This is a step, a first step in recognizing that disparity and trying to adjust it. What the look back adjustment would be is difficult to say is going to be based on weather. If we have an extremely wet year, your water sales will be down. But the majority of your costs for both water and sewer are fixed. I would say 80% of your costs you receive from Gleewa in southeast McComb are fixed costs. So regardless of rainfall, you're still going to pay that amount of money. However, your rate methodology, you have primarily based on a usage fee. So dry, you're making a lot of money. When it's wet, you're, you're running thin. Two years ago, your profit within the water and sewer fund was $95,000. So you're not collecting too much. Last year, it was, I believe, over 400,000 because you had that September '22 billing. You sold about 80,000 units of water and in turn, because there is 6 hours of water temperature. That was, I would say, 40,000 units above your average. So having a look back adjustment would be able to identify that, determine it. How much that look back adjustment would be on a calendar basis, we won't know until we have three or four quarters in. Right now, water and sewer revenues are coming in with expectations, but if you see a very dry June, July, August. It was discussed that the finance committee would review it, determine what's, what can be passed on or at least capped or limited for the billing for individual residents. I, since being here in Rose Point shores, that's probably the biggest concern that I've heard from residents is the same thing that was stated this evening. So I guess this is the first step on trying to get a limitation on it and reducing the usage fee and trying to rebalance it with your operational fee. The next fund is the marina fund. It have revenues of 336,000, likewise expenses of 371,000. This 371 does include depreciation, which is a non cash expenditure on a cash flow basis. It reflects your principal and interest payments of, well, let's see here, 140 plus 90, 220,000. For the next two to three years, that number's going to be constant. So you're in good shape on watering, on the marina fees and your fund reserves there as well. Lastly, your debt service, what do you have for outstanding debt? You've got the honeywell where there was the energy project undertaken in 2013. That has several, that has another four years to be prior to payoff. The debt retirement cost is 200,000 a year, outstanding balance is 978,000 dollars. The next spot, the 2013 general refunding bonds. The, the current outstanding balance is 315 with the payment with interest of 319, that'll be completely paid off. Earlier, this slide pointed out, we collect 0.65 per millage for debt retirement. That's the 0.65 that will come off the tax bill next year. Marina bonds, I noted they're, they're going to be consistent. They're going to run around 230 this year. They'll average about 225 for the next two, three, four years. So you won't see any significant bumps there. The capital improvement bond of the $8 million, the current debt retirement is 285,000. Next year, that's interest only. Next year, you're going to see 190,000 in principal added to that. When comparing the 2013 to 2022, your net change will be a reduction of 155,000 dollars. Brandon once collected on the water bill, once collected on the tax bill, but that'll be the net change or reduction. That's it for the slide presentation. If the council has any questions.
This is a public hearing, so if anybody from the public would like to make a comment or ask a question, this would be an appropriate time to do so.
Dale, can I address a couple of points with this? Our water usage and sewerage where we incur debt to pay for improvements as we have in the past. I caught something and I want to make sure I heard this correctly. Tell me if I'm off base. The way we are servicing the debt for water and sewerage upgrades, replacements, maintenance is directly through our water bills.
Correct.
And some of the other gross points actually pass millages through their general operating budgets that go towards those improvements, maintenance, whatever they're using it for. Because I, I, I understand the concerns that we all have for what we see on our water bills. And we do pay a lot of money for our water and sewerage. I want to make sure we have as accurate information as possible about how our debt and maintenance is paid for as opposed to what some of the other gross points that appear to show a lower water and sewerage rate. Can you expand on that and do any kind of detail?
I would say with my glance over at the other communities, their operational fixed fee is typically higher. The other communities, they bill six times a year, the shortest bills four times a year or quarter with. That'll make a difference. When you're assessing costs for capital improvements within the water and sewer fund, it's best served and paid for by users of that water and sewer fund. When you do it on a basis of property tax value, is it as equitable as doing it on the basis of water usage? I would say you, manner in which you collect it through the water, water and sewer revenue bonds is, you know, the, the appropriate direction to take with that. How much you collect depends on how much you spend and how much you borrow. Currently, your fee is $65 per billing per homeowner. That totals, whatever our debt payment this year is, 285,000. That'll go up to $105 next year and the principal gets added in.
The. When, when you, is that in relation to the work we just?
That's the work we just completed on like shores.
That was an $8 million.
Eight million.
Bond to pay for all of the water mains and granted, that work hadn't been done. These were 100-year-old water mains that were too small. They didn't need to be replaced. You understand that. But that, that debt server, that debt retirement fee, that's going to go up to 105 bucks per quarter, right, per house.
That's a $420 per homeowner.
Yeah.
For that debt.
All right. I'm just trying to put that in consideration with proposals to issue another $8 million bond strictly for water and sewerage for the reservoir and pump station, things of that. Just kind of thinking out loud here. Apologize for that.
So I guess what can I add would be $840 a year increase.
If we had another, obviously, if we did another $8 million bond for water and sewerage upgrades within a year, year and a half or so, we'll need that $800 a month per house per year.
Less the 65 you're currently collecting, collecting. So 840 less the 65 currently on the bill.
Okay, so $600 more. Yeah.
And just another point, council, when they voted for the bond, if you remember, one of the considerations you took in knowing that this increase would come in next year, we waited, that's why we paid the, only the interest for the first three years. So next year, when the full vote comes on and you're paying the principal, we have the other debt coming off. Now, it's going to come off the taxes and not the water bill. We're trying to figure out if there's a way to get those together where you would have to increase. But it's a wash at the end of the year because you'll get a big of a break on that reduction on the taxes as you are in the addition of the principal.
So I did do some math, looking at numbers that we presented. First of all, I commend the city on what they've done so far. I mean, they've reduced our, our sewage expenses from, they were like $950,000 two years ago. This year, I think you said the budget is $800,000, but I think the finance budget is.
749.
It's going to be 749. So that number may be a little bit inflated now, so. But that's a $200,000 savings per year that the city has done for us through the efforts of Mike Way and through Steve Colony, which I think is great. And that's why I think we're seeing this reduction in water units that we're, we're doing. And also what they have done for us, at least in reducing the amount of stormwater that goes into the drains by the smoke testing that they've done and then sealing those pipes and the manual coverage preparations and sealing them. So a lot of work has been done in improving the system by our city so far, which is great. And that's where we're seeing those reductions. There's still more to be done though. And part of that is this $8 million storage capacity unit, which we have a memorandum of understanding of that legally right now, plans as to a corrective action plan that actually came up with to say we will do this $8 million project. But just, and that's great, and we may ultimately end up doing that. But I just did some math on, on, for like Dr. Fishman and whoever else is in the room to see what it would be in a few years when we have this extra debt under water bill. So if you drop the $66 debt, because that's going to be gone, and add on the $840 per year, it's a, it's a net difference of $600 a year because it's 840 minus the 240. So with that in place, and then we can increase the operational funds. So if you're in Florida and using zero units of water, you're going to be paying 4250 for your operational fee. And then you're going to be paying $192.50 for that debt fee that we're going to be, so. So with zero, zero units of water, I left winter bill, you're going to be paying 4250 plus 19250, two something.
230.
230, thank you. So at 230 for, for no, no use of water. But the people that use more water are going to have a benefit. So for instance, people that use 40 units of water per bill, which is actually the average in Rose Point shores, 40. So doing the math there, you're going to save with the water reduction, $150 and for, for, for cycle, but your operational fund fees are going to go up. So you're going to have a net of actually $57.50 decrease on your water bill in a quarter time, which is great. And you'll see a decrease of $230 per year until that debt comes to fruition and we're paying the extra money. And then actually, instead of being a reduction of $230, we build, your bill will go up by different $600. Your bill will go up $370 with these reductions we made. So even though it appears to be a reduction today, and it is, truly it is, once these bonds come to your bill, your bill will actually jump by $600 per year. So I know we're all upset with the water bills now and we're doing these efforts to reduce it. But be prepared for when these bonds come due in a few years, when we're paying these, these, these fees, your bills are going to be higher despite these decreases, attempts at decreasing the bill. So I understand where some of the communities coming together and saying, gosh, this is, this is the Titanic ready, the iceberg in the water. And we need to do something to rectify things. So perhaps we don't have, and maybe there's a novel alternative. We've gone from, from southeast McComb sanitation district, which is our sewage system. We've gone from our, our, we're built based on our flow rates. We're based on three cubic feet per second flow. And when we're over that, we're based, we're penalized and charged for monies that we shouldn't have been over. But the, the improvements that the city has done is markedly reduces overdose. In 2019, I think our overdoses were like 39 million gallons over in our flow. For the last five years, with the improvements that Mike Way and Steve Colony have done, our overdoses are average of 5 million gallons over. So we come from that high of a level to almost, almost within the requirements of the SEMSD, which is great with these improvements. So I, I just wondered if it might be proving to us, I know we have a, a estimate with HRC for this $8 million project, which may solve a problem. If it rains a lot, I don't know that it will 100%, but it may. But I just wondered if we could sit down with the sewer department and say, gosh, we made these improvements. We've got 30 million gallons over a year to five on average. And wait for a dry year, it could even be less than that. Maybe we can change our corrective action plan to be less dramatic and have less debt for ourselves and for our children. And it's a 30-year bond, so for our children, it's children. So I, I think it may be worthwhile to get a second opinion. It'd be fair to the residents, I think, to have a second opinion from another, as you refer, to see if there's a lower cost alternative than spending this extra $8 million. And maybe there's not. And if that's the case, we should definitely embrace this and go forward. But I think it's probably fair to everyone here to at least get a second opinion. I, you've got a second opinion when you're your, your surgeon, right? So unless it's already been done, maybe it has been. So maybe Mr. Colony can explain that.
Well, we're, so we are, so just, you know, that meeting is already scheduled with SEMSD. So we do have a sit down with them. And again, we've been working at this. As I think I said at the last council meeting, there are some strategies I just, we're not going to make public because we're negotiating and you don't put those negotiations out. So we're working on that. So we have a meeting, another meeting with SEMSD on the 29th of this month. So we will be addressing the exact issues you're talking about. And the second opinion, so it really comes down to a couple of things. One, if, if, if a pump station or a storage is determined to be needed, those prices are going to be similar no matter what engineering firm we use.
Sure.
So it's really a quick look at this, because there are other options. There are, there are, you know, building storage or building that pump station to create storage is really the only place you can put the water. There's not, so. Instead of, you know, we're kind of hesitant of spending 50 to 100,000 on another engine firm to start all over through this process to give us the same recommendation. So we're not saying that it's not worth the discussion. But our first place to go is with SEMSD to see what other options there are. And like I said, Mike's been working with them. He's on their board and Mike has been working with them. And, and one of the things that we've accomplished, and I said, these are unprecedented costs. I mean, our neighbors around us are going up 50, some of them 50% next year in sewage rates, some of them 25, some of them $2 million on our tax rolls. The firm is going out for a huge bond. So we're, we took, we took some proactive steps, or you did, took some proactive steps a few years ago. And so we're now seeing the ordinance that we passed, the bonds, some of the work that we did. We're starting to see fruition of those efforts bring these costs down. Dale is really sharp on this, on the water side of it. So we've looked at a couple of other options and this cap is a really important thing. He just kind of grazed over it tonight because we can't give you a specific answer on the cap yet, but we're looking at. So again, as I mentioned last meeting, in, in the 22, when we had those huge water bills, that was really an anomaly. So what had happened is, if you remember, city council asked Candice to change the structure of the water bills. Candice came in and did that. She brought an outside firm in to help her do that. Well, when they looked at those rates at the time, and this is just a couple of little things. One of the things they saw were those high exceedance fees, if you remember. So you were paying a huge amount of money on sewer. So when they set those rates, they were setting them on that rate. So we set that rate, then we brought rates way down. Well, they couldn't, they couldn't forecast that when they set those rates. And so then we had a dry year and we saw this big spike. And that's when all of that is the big water bill. Really, that September billing was the one. Last year, we didn't have that. Not that the bills are still high. And again, I, I just remind people that we, our wholesale rates are higher than anywhere else. It's just a fact. And that's why we pay more. We don't. And again, I just remind people that we, our wholesale rates are higher than anywhere else. It's just a fact, and that's why we pay more. We don't have, Rose Point Woods has storage. We don't have storage because the residents here did not want a tower back years ago when we talked about putting a tower in. So there's a lot of things that go into this, but what I'm saying is we're, we're headed in the right direction. All that's concerned, we hear them, and as council's talked us, we've made these moves in just two years now, and we're seeing some of that pay off, and we're continuing to work on that. So everything that's said tonight, we're taking into consideration and moving in that direction, and if we run into someone's block, they will come to you. And of course, if you spend eight more million dollars, yes, people are going to pay more money. I mean, it's, the money's not free, and if you have to do the infrastructure, that's just. The other fact is, and we have an asset management plan, and if you look around the state of Michigan, every community is going through this. So all the sewers and these lines were put back in in the fifties. Everybody's infrastructure is now starting to crumble. They're in life expectancy, and so every city is going through the same thing. We got a good jump on it because we did some things a few years ago. There's still, I, I, as I told the council, so here's a list that we have. This is thirteen million dollars in projects for water and sewer that still have not been addressed, and we don't have a funding source for it, so that's why we do have to make some profit in the water and sewer area. We don't, again, some years we make a lot, and some years we don't. As you see, as Dale showed, we have about a three, three, almost three million dollars. Well, that, there's thirteen million in projects on top of another eight million if we borrow it, so really we have about twenty-one million dollars in projects. So we know we can't do those right away, we know those are going to take time, but we're starting to nip away at that, and again, we're meeting with those people to try to address just what you're talking about tonight.
Well, we had the town hall, somebody asked, how did we get in this situation? How did we get here? And during the two thousand and ten, we signed a water service agreement, water service contract between D.C. Detroit and Village of Rose Point Shore, signed by Dave Bing, who was then the mayor of Detroit. And so this was a thirty-year agreement. There's a little bit of wiggle room. I, I see something that we probably need to talk to our lawyer about or whatever, but, but basically, we signed a thirty-year agreement. And then during the bankruptcy, they got transferred to a newly created authority called GLEWA, Great Lakes Water Authority. And they're very well-run. I mean, that was one of the points in bankruptcy, that they wanted independent, the suburbs were, were primed for some independence and also participation on, on the board. So then we ended up with this southeast McComb sanitary district, and I believe that was originally under the jurisdiction of Wayne County. And Wayne County transferred that to this newly created entity as well. Now, one thing we don't have, we don't have the, the scale here. Our assessment or our charge for the sanitary district is seven hundred forty-nine thousand. So let's round it up to seven hundred fifty thousand. How many customers does Rose Point Shores have? We have eleven hundred and twenty-five customers, almost all residential, so nobody's paying a business rate. The business rates are higher than residential, and they include an environmental service charge, which we don't have because that's for the business customers, which we don't have. Rose Point Woods has sixty-six thousand eight hundred and fifty customers. Rose Point Farms has forty-five hundred customers. Rose Point City is twenty-seven hundred. Rose Point Park is forty-three hundred. So you could see we're just, we're small. Now, if we took our charge of seven hundred forty-nine thousand, that's what they charged us, that's what they charged us this fiscal year. We divide that by eleven hundred and twenty-five, we have a fixed cost of six hundred and sixty-six dollars. That's fixed to everybody. Everyone here is paying six hundred and sixty-six dollars. In Rose Point Woods, their assessed charge was one million nine hundred and ninety-two thousand five hundred twenty-five. But remember, their base is almost seven thousand customers. You do the math, it's two hundred and ninety-one dollars rounding up. The differential is over three hundred and seventy-five dollars between us and our neighbor, all things equal, all things equal. We're starting off with a handicap right there, and it's partly because our small size, we don't have the economies of scale, and, and so everything is illuminated very, very quickly here. But, you know, the lack of a business district really hurts. But again, not having a business district is what makes this community so unique, which makes it so desirable, which makes it a destination city. So I, I'm glad we don't have a business district, but we, we, we know what's going, each one of us is paying a water bill and making choices in our own homes. I've had plumbers at my house about three or four times in the last year and a half to see, to look for leaks, to look for trouble, anticipate trouble. You know, I mean, so this year, we're lowering our property taxes a little bit, we're lowering our water rates a, a little bit, we're lowering our sewage rates a little bit. But we got a good team and we're really working. A lot of good suggestions came up, Kevin, including your suggestion about, those are all good suggestions, and I, I'm, I'm thinking this through and going to discuss with, with our management team and council the right way to do this. But we have to be very careful here. Like Steve is saying, there are strategies that we really don't want to express in public. So they may be really under the attorney-client privilege, so we don't want to tell people what we want to do. And Dale, your presentation was right on, was very good. Our pension costs have gone up a hundred ninety thousand. We've adopted newer life insurance mortality tables, meaning people are living longer, but they need, they need to be covered for the defined benefit plan that we have. And we're trying to do, the park has never looked better, never looked better, but we need major improvements to the pool. We're sitting with over almost like one point three million dollars right now from the beneficiary who enjoyed the park so much, she left that money in her revocable trust when she died. So, I mean, there's some really good things happening. I mean, but the water bill is, 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 nobody calls me about their property case. Nobody calls me to say, what can I do about my property case? I get zero calls, and maybe that's good. But when our water bills come out, and I brought every one of my water bills to the town hall, looking at it, there were little posters, they were like a little piece of cardboard. And, and I had bills like ninety dollars, a hundred and ten dollars, like I'm going, what happened? But, I mean, I've been here twenty-nine years, twenty-nine years. I had a bill from nineteen ninety-five, and the bill was seventy dollars. So, and at that time, it just said WS, WS. Well, what's WS? Water Sewage. So now it was when we had Candice, our financial director before Dale, and I said, it'd be nice to, to make it open and transparent, can we divide that? People say, how much is sewage? How much is water? It was a very crude attack, and we didn't really, maybe it would cause more harm by doing it, but we, we wanted the people to know the water bill is forty percent and the sewer bill is about sixty percent. And that's been consistent. But remember, our starting point right now is everyone starts with this contract with this fixed charge of almost seven hundred dollars, right, right off the bat, which is almost four hundred dollars more expensive than Rose Point Woods. They have huge storage, and I think we approached them some time ago, and they said, but you got to pay. Pay for what? Part of the storage tank, you know? We looked at Rose Point Farms, joining with Rose Point Farm. We were told by our engineers, and I don't understand what it means, you have to reverse engineer our system. We had to reverse engineer our system, whatever that is, and it means dollars. We have to pay money to change the flow, apparently, with the elevations and the pumping and, and the technology to do that. So we're, and then, of course, then the city, they, the city and the farms get some water from you-know-where. But, so we're really, I, I think we're making improvements, we're making strides. Don't forget Mary Wilson, they had a water bill, I mean, I couldn't believe that, it was forty thousand?
Thirty-five, thirty-five.
So that's the record, you know, that's, that's for three months. We were talking, she came to the meeting, she said, you know, and of course, the water bill was central to, and she says, she raised her hand, she said, I can beat that, because somebody came, I had a five thousand dollar water. We had a resident at Lake Shore said that when he bought the house fifteen years ago, he was told he could tie into a, a system that was already in place under Lake Shore. And it was going to cost him twelve or thirteen thousand dollars. And he said, I'm not going to pay that, there's no way the water bill, you know, I'm an accountant, he says, I can figure that out, there's no way I'm going to be ahead. Well, he called me about six months ago, he said, I made a bad, bad decision. I should have tied in, because, he said, being the accountant now, looking at our bills now, he would have been better ahead. Of course, now you got a little water, you know, we have people talking about drilling their own wells in the backyard, and, but, believe me, everything is on the table right now. And more importantly, everything is being open and transparently. I mean, we're, I brought everything that I have here. I got a big mound of paper. I brought it to the town hall. And I said, anybody want to see the service contract that we signed with the city, you know, right during the face of bankruptcy? You know, it's right here, and then they immediately sent it to, assigned that contract to GLEWA. We don't believe it was, but, so, but Dale, and again, this is our public hearing, and this is our second required public hearing, and then we had the town hall, and I, I mean, again, there's no easy solution here. Part of it is our economies of scale are just not there. It'd be nice if we could unite with another city, and that, it'd be nice for all the Rose Points to unite and to give us some leverage. We have no leverage, eleven hundred and twenty-five customers, and we go, we, you know, we're, we're, we're like insignificant. We get rounded out. Our numbers get rounded out at the, at the regional level, so.
Well, I think as a first step, moving more towards that operational fee and moderating that usage fee that's so high, that really penalizes people that water in summer. I think with this look-back adjustment we made, there was a suggestion, well, what about my winter usage? Can we index it off of that? That can be done, it's just a matter of picking, how many units have we sold this particular year? What are our revenue requirements? Back to the size of the community, if you're replacing a mile worth of water main in Rose Point Shores or Rose Point Woods, it's going to be the same cost, you're just distributing it over fewer people. So you are hindered on that basis, but I, I think, I think this is a good step in the right direction, or at least the first step. And then it's focusing on this look-back adjustment on how it might be applied, and a lot of it's weather-dependent. Again, the one comment was made relative to being gone for the winter and not using any water, and why do I have a fee? Eighty percent of your fees from water and sewer are fixed charges from GLEWA and southeast McComb. So half the community can move or relocate in the winter months to Florida, you're still, the community's still going to incur eighty percent of those costs regardless.
But the homes aren't equal, and that, that's what I heard at the town hall. We have homes on a forty-foot lot on Burnier, sixty and seventy-five width lot on Burnier. We have a hundred foot, we have two hundred feet, we have even bigger lots. You assign those costs over eleven hundred homes equally? And I heard that from before, our former finance director I met with her, it's not a fair way to do it, you know, to do it based on, because underneath the hole is all our water lines, the sewer lines, and that's what could, when you're in Florida, that's what can rupture. We used to budget toward forty to sixty water main breaks every year, and the average cost from our tucker is somewhere between two thousand and six thousand for a small water main break. That's why we have maintenance, and the hope was with a newer system, some newer, and one of the things that we were required to do under federal law was look for pipes that had lead in them. And we had to adopt a corrective action plan or determine if we had a, a problem, and then adopt a plan, address it to remedy it.
There's a one comment you made, Mayor, relative, did you take your operational fee and spread it equally amongst all homes?
Well, we talked, we never, it had to do with the minimum.
And I, I think you really, I would avoid that from the standpoint, if you have a home that contributes more rainwater runoff, larger footing drains, a, a bigger lot to drain. So the, yeah, the amount of pipe to service that home versus, let's say, a forty-foot home next to it, how you allocate those costs are debatable.
But if you truly want to be equal, or to be fair, you know, equitable, I guess is a better word, then, then you're looking at, you know, better math, you know, equation in terms of the fixed cost, I guess. Rhonda thought that she was our finance director before, she thought, you know, that's just not fair because now you're. And I don't know if our software at the time could have handled it. I understand maybe now it could, I don't know.
Yeah, I think if you did, if you took eighty percent of your costs and spread them equally throughout the community on a cost basis, and spreading eighty percent cost on your operational fee, you're going to see a major jump in that operational fee. And I think the number of calls you're going to get probably be even greater. I think you're best trying to address those that are sprinkling and taking care of their lawns that are, feel that they're being penalized for doing so, that the water's not going to the sewer system, why am I paying for that? I think focusing more on this look-back adjustment and how to address that concern will be, I think, the direction to take.
Okay. I remember even twelve years ago, we had an issue regarding overcharging the Rose Point Yacht Club, and that was a million dollars seemed to be overcharged, and we had to come up with a remedy to pay them over a five-year period, and we had a stellar. Of actually Kay Phelps, who's Visbal, I forget who else was, was on there, but, and we, we really, Chuck, I think, were you part of it too?
That, I think.
So, I mean.
Oh, Don? I just have another question about the report. I'm not sure if you can go to the slides again, but your second or third slide, what's a major concern? It's another question about one of the. That's it. So I'm looking at estimated twenty twenty-four reserves in June and then the twenty twenty-five revenues. What do those mean? So I, I guess I understand the revenues, that's the, that's the money we're going to take in from the water bill expected in twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty twenty-five fiscal year, around three million dollars. But the reserves from twenty twenty-four, what does exactly that mean, that two point nine million? Is that money that's already been?
If you look at your reserves on your financial statements for the water and sewer fund, the number will be in the neighborhood of fifteen million dollars. That includes plant, equipment, pipe, vehicles and so forth. Of those total, of, of those total reserves, two point nine million reflects what you have in basically liquid assets. What do we have on it available to pay operating costs or any major main, main water sewer breaks and so forth? So the two point nine is more reflective of available cash?
So in essence, we have about a year's worth of cash in the bank for the fund for a rainy day.
You do.
This would have been part that might be used to deduct, reduce the, maybe the bond, but I don't know, seems like.
Well, you, you need a healthy reserve.
Yeah.
Because you got thirteen million dollars in projects, and that's really the biggest thing. I mean, we need to have, instead of two point nine in there, we really need thirteen million in there, so we're, we're a little short, you know, there's ten million to build that up, to do, take care of the problems that we have. So though it's a nice reserve, and it is a nice reserve, I mean, there are communities that have less, and it's a good reserve, but we're going to be tackling that, we're trying to tackle on some of these projects so that we don't end up acting to bind out all those projects as well. So we're picking off, like we just picked off Roslyn, so that was a seven hundred thousand dollars that we paid out of reserves, that, so you'll see that come off of the reserves because we owe seven hundred thousand this year to pay for that project. So we're, but we knocked out one of our problem areas, and so as we go down the list, you know, that you have, you can see that where that's where we're going.
Right. Yeah, we have over thirty percent. Remember, we signed a resolution so that standard and course rating service would, would treat us as triple-A rated, or triple-A rated. There's like three communities of the forty-three communities in Wayne County that are triple-A rated, and we're one of the three, but we have twenty five percent of more surplus in our fund balance, and we're over thirty, thirty-eight percent.
So Dale, your, your proposal or your way of fixing the problem would be to cap the sewage with a lookout, look back during the summer.
Yes, when you have a dry cycle, on your quarterly billings, you can determine relatively quickly, how much did we bill for that particular quarter? What do we expect to meet our revenue goals for the year? And if we're ahead of that, so let's say you bill thirty thousand units a quarter, so you've got ninety units, a hundred, yeah, ninety units, it's thirty a quarter, and let's say our target's a hundred and thirty units. So if September bill comes in, you bill, you've got, you can bill for seventy thousand units, you can look back and say, wait, we can cut that billing in half on the usage fee. That's one way to cap it. The other way is you can look at someone's winter average difficulty there, if it's based on usage and their absence from the community. You still have your fixed cost of water main breaks, sewer breaks, but line replacement, staff remains the same. remains the same. So I, I think we'll get to where at least painful and collect the money, where it's a little more equitable amongst all users. And right now, the amount, and what, what the community's hearing is the amount that's being passed on for water sprinkling is really what seems to be the driving force. And I think this, this is a step in the right direction. I think so.
Well, good job, Dale.
I have two more questions. These are really little questions. But I ask these questions actually at the finance committee meeting that we had just a few years ago. I just wanted this, the residents to hear this too. So the first question is, has to do with Highland Park. We paid, what, sixty thousand dollars to a group of, to pay for Highland Park's water when they defaulted on their Gleewa water bill? And I asked that before, would that sixty thousand dollars come back to the residents who paid that?
It's only that, so it's only nine thousand dollars to Gleewa. So we paid nine thousand to Gleewa. That is being returned to us in the last quarter of this period. Once again, we paid that out of our reserves. I mean, it wasn't, we didn't add that nine thousand to people's bills. So it wasn't an addition. Like we didn't pay, we didn't raise the water rates to pay Highland Parks. We just took that out of that two point nine reserves and paid that off.
The. Yeah, but the people paid into that two point nine dollars, so it's, didn't they?
Well, based on their water bills.
Yeah, but we didn't, but what I'm saying is we were paying our water bills for the price of water. And then this charge came on. We didn't go to the residents, say, we're being charged more now for Highland Park. We're going to increase your rates. The rates stayed the same. We just pulled it out of our reserves to pay for it. Is, is how we did that.
Yes.
You can give back, well, you can give back all your reserves, Don. I mean, you can, but what I'm saying is that nine thousand is there, again, towards these projects. I mean, we can return it, obviously, if that's what council wants to do, we'll return the nine thousand. That's from Glee. Now, the other is around forty thousand, we're guessing. So we're in about forty thousand to SEMSD. Now, so you understand how that works. The money was returned back to them because they're a tier one customer, we're a tier two customer. So we get no money directly back on that forty thousand. SEMSD has not decided whether they're putting that into infrastructure, if they're going to send it back to us. That's one of our reasons for our meeting with them on the twenty ninth, to find out what their intentions are. So we'll find out from then where, where that's going.
Thank you. And then the, the last financial question about water. At the budget committee meeting that we had last time, I noticed, and several of us did, that the medical and dental insurance that we're paying for, for all, all the employees, pretty much doubled, whether it's in, in the roads or, or in the general fund or whatever. Pretty much everything doubled. But the, the sewer water fund didn't double. It went from thirteen thousand dollars a year to forty eight thousand dollars a year. So why a disproportionate four times increase in the medical dental from the water department and not so much from everything else?
I would have to look back at what our allocation was on a budget basis and who's assigned to the water board various, I know.
Right. I think so, if you, if you look at that, so one of the things that they did is they were charging, if you look at personnel services, and we've talked about that, that was that two twenty five figure. That number's been being used, that same number for many, many years. We've never increased, at least during the three years I'm here, we've been still collecting, even though increases have gone up, salary and all those things. So I, I think when Dale calculated it, you've got, we took a better look at like who all comes has something to do with water. So at one time, we were only charging, that thirteen thousand was for one employee, that was for Kevin. When we really looked back and said, what are we really doing? You have Dale working on water, I'm working on water, Mike's working on water, you have two clerks upstairs working partially on water, on water billing. And so we said there, to make that fair, you take more out of that because that's what's the true cost. So instead of just Kevin, who's the one full time employee, we said, all these people have to be involved in that, same as with the personnel services.
And further on that, half the costs are for retirees that are no longer in the system, whether they work in the police department, the water department, so forth. There's two additional invoices we have to pay, the May and June invoices that haven't been distributed yet, Don. So when we do a final recap, Steve and I will sit down, okay, who's where and what's that final allocation? So that hasn't been finalized yet.
Well, thank you. I mean, I know you spent a lot of time and effort to do this, and we thank you for those efforts and thanks for answering all the questions.
And I just have one last question, Dale. The, the tax value of Gross Point charges is at, looks like three hundred and sixty six thousand roughly. So one mill is one thousand of that. So when we talk a mill of tax, people ask me, they go, what is that? So it's three hundred and sixty is six thousand dollars. Okay, that's a good start.
Yeah, it's up about six point four percent of the prior year. Which allowed us to roll the rates back because we didn't acquire six point four percent.
Dale, thank you for the presentation.
Included with the outline are the resolutions that the council will be required to pass establishing the tax rates and the water and sewer rates.
Okay, who would like to make those motions?
I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five budget resolution. Excuse me.
Any further discussion? If not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
I also want to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty four proposed tax rate.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, I also want to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty four proposed water rate.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Thank you, Sandra. Dale, thank you. All right, at this point, we're at item eleven of these ones by chair of persons. The aye here again.
The included in your packet are the current invoices for the month. It totaled a little over two hundred thousand dollars. There's no unusual or non routine bill. It's asphalt control, sidewalks, cement work. But there's nothing out of the ordinary. Pay your quarterly Flemis bill for the public safety department, some minor repairs. Your contractors, one of their pay applications for working on the current sewer improvement project. That's pretty much a summary. If anyone has a question, I'll look at all.
I just a quick clarification. So I think it was like four, six, five, four, three, the carousel and the petting fur. Is that going to be some kind of reimbursement that maybe I thought was the improvement foundation going to help because that was spring or that totally city dust they continued? I felt with, okay. And then another question I have, a fence repair from the accident, do we have insurance for that? Four thousand, forty five hundred dollars for the.
I don't know what your deductible is. I'm going to guess your deductible is going to be around ten. I believe the person that caused the accident wasn't insured.
Was not insured. Normally, we, we would recruit that from the driver or other insurance company. We, we, we're not done with that case, so we've asked for the judge to see if, if we can get some kind of fee back. But it didn't look so promising.
Is he under the weather a little bit?
Yeah, he did. He drove around the park for about twenty minutes.
Really?
Yeah, he drove around through the whole park trying to find an exit. Once he got in, didn't figure out how to get out.
Chuck, should I have our, hold on, a few other questions? Four, six, five, one, four, tax refund of that.
Yeah, if, if you're a vet and considered disabled, that's, you're exempt from property tax.
Hundred percent.
Received the exception and we had to refund the money.
So obviously. Yeah, and there's no limit on, on the size of the house. One of our neighboring mayors has a three billion dollar house that's owned by a hundred percent service disabled veteran. And so they pay no tax. But that's the law. I need a motion, sorry, I need a motion to approve the check registry now. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Financial statements?
In front of the mayor and members of council, is there a recap for the period ending May thirty first of our operations? General fund, we're on target to meet our revenue requirements. We anticipate receiving seven point four million for the year. We're at seven point six when you exclude the one point two million dollar donation. We're over on that end. We have the American Recovery Act funds of two hundred and ninety three thousand. That was recognized as revenue. And then our interest, interest rates are, we're going to hit two hundred thousand plus this year. We're up to one eighty seven. Everything else within the general fund is normal for the month. Expenses are in line. The, you're in good shape there. Again, as we pointed out in the budget presentation, you'll see a bump up in reserves for the general fund. Major and local street funds reflect some of the improvements that are being undertaken right now. Division concrete did a lot already. And again, those will step up again next year. Arena fund, the water and sewer fund's holding its own, the water and sewer fund. You will not know how you end up this year until we see our next billing, which is for the June cycle. But they're all in good shape.
Thank you, Dale. Are there any questions? The financial statements. The only thing we need to do probably for the fiscal year is budget management.
Yeah, next week.
Thanks, Dale.
You're welcome.
Very well done. Sandra, finance committee?
Basically, we discussed everything that Dale just presented right now. So the only thing I have to add would be that there's going to be a finance committee, a meeting on June the fourth at nine AM at the council hall. So if anybody of the public wants to attend, they're welcome to attend. It will be basically mostly the subject of water and sewage. We want to hear, you know, what you have to say and see if we can figure out a better way of, of solving the problem. So it's again, June the fourth, nine AM.
Good. Thank you, Sandra. Chief, public safety? Are we ready to change the topic here? Let's lighten the air up a little bit, stop talking about money. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here in front of you tonight. I have just chatted down some notes to kind of update you on what's going on in the public safety department. Tonight, you got the opportunity to meet Sean, and like I said, we're really, really high on him. He's going to compliment us tremendously. With that being said, Officer Jason Rager, who's been on OJI for the last six months, and set to come back in the next two weeks, June fifth is his date of return. So that will take a little more strain off of our staff. With Sean, we're at fifteen. We have, we, you know, the public safety department and city manager have extended a conditional offer of employment to a gentleman named Jared Cheever. Jared is a paramedic firefighter that answered one of our ads, came in and did a ride along. And so the feedback from the staff that worked with him that day was a really good guy. Played a little college football, he's a big gentleman. He's like about six foot four, two hundred and eight pounds. But our goal is to, he's currently visiting his family in California when he gets back. And when I get back for my trip, it's full court press. Do you get the psych test in, the physical test in, the background check? And the academy starts the second week in August. So all the time climbs look good, but that would bring our numbers up to sixteen. That is probably the number that we, Steve and I agreed upon. And it's huge for our schedule. I was thinking just now, I think I've hired ten people in four years, and only two are here. So we're doing pretty good. And we're big on Jared too, and hopefully everything works out well. A reminder that on June eighteenth, it's a Tuesday night, the fireworks for Sigma Gamma will be going off at the Ford State. I'll put a nixal out, forgot to put the nixal out last year, and our phone blew up, was going on over there. I think that happens before we meet for council. And talking to Aaron Wagner, we are on, again, the paperwork is close set for the Fourth of July fireworks as well. Coming up to on the sixteenth, which is Father's Day of June, is the Eyes on Design. I've been working with Dave Locke over there, and it's, it's their biggest event. And this year, they're anticipating it to be bigger. There's always a theme with the cars they show, and they have a, a large amount of participants this year. So on Father's Day in the morning at five AM, we'll be out there setting up. Mike, Mike's going to help me, but there'll be a little enclosure for parking and for loading and unloading of vehicles and stuff like that. Just going to be a busy corner. I'm sure some of you have gone by there years past, but it seems to be, we're working on that, putting it together. There's no surprises, it's just kind of doing what we did in the past. Our park staff for the gate is all back. Everybody is returning. So the four years that I've been the chief, I haven't had to hire any park staff, which is great because they all know what to do. Those hours go twenty four hours starting next weekend on holiday. So the recovery's there all the whole time. And recently, we have sent somebody to basic SWAT school and open hand combat survival school. Billy Howell is our newest member of the SWAT team. And he has one more training to get his credit hours so that he can be an operator on the team. Just passing that on with a little bit of what's going on for us. And one other note, the police academy, I checked, the grant for the state is still good. So if Jared works out and goes to the academy, those costs are paid for by the state. It's an incentive they have because it's so hard to hire people right now. So the last three people we've sent through, maybe three or four, it's, you know, I want to say it's free, but it's free, so it's, it's all good. Do you have any questions? Any, any questions for the chief? Perfect. No. Thank you, chief. Public works, Mike?
First, I want to say I'm happy to have the Eyes on Design on Father's Day. My daughter's first dance recital, so I'm going to be there. But no, I'll help Kenny out. I'm sure I'll have guys there that will help out.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just, make just a few things for you this month. We have been really, really busy trying to get the buildings and grounds prepared for Memorial Day. I am still short on summer help. Last year, we had about nine seasonal employees, and I'm sitting at four and a half right now. One guy in school, I'm working half days. So if anybody knows of any college or high school kids, high school in particular, because they'll be getting out real soon, who would like a summer job, tell them to come see me. Some of you may have noticed that Harold is back. He's been on a lawnmower, so you might see him out in front of City Hall or on Highlands. I desperately needed a good grass cutter. He was willing to come back just as a seasonal employee. Stop and say hi to him if you see him on the road. I certainly appreciate his dedication to the city. The pool is ready for opening day on Friday. It is certainly not without its problems this year, but we are working through them. Some of you have already heard about them, done at the December meetings. The filtration pumps need to be rotated out and rebuilt. One is currently in the shop right now. It will hopefully be back in service by the end of next week. The pool does have two redundant pumps that rotate usage, so it's fully capable of operating at a hundred percent with one pump, which is what's going right now. There's also a float valve inside the surge tank that occasionally gets stuck this year, which makes operation just a little bit difficult. That valve will also be replaced ASAP, either late this week or early next week. Hopefully, after the pumps and the new valve get replaced, we'll be back to a hundred percent. The park is ready to go with all the picnic tables having been cleaned and placed in their locations. The pool deck, pavilion and basketball courts have been power washed. The gardens have been prepped for Flower Day, which I'm sure Helen will let you all know about when she talks later on. The park maintenance shed is very close to being ready for restoration. Our sprinklers will hopefully be primed by the end of the day tomorrow, meaning we're filling the pipes with water and making sure there's no problems. Then I can cover them with dirt and begin concrete restoration, and then we can begin the grounds restoration. That's it. Oh, one last thing. My newest employee, Andrew Pink, he completed his CDL test this week and passed. So he will get through probation and become a full-fledged employee, like I thought he would. That's it. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for me? I got, one resident asked me if we have some kind of mitigation for the droppings from the geese. Are you going to power wash? I know we're short on people, but.
So like on the walkways and stuff?
The Memorial Weekend or, I mean, well.
So last year, we had a dedicated seasonal employee to power wash. And I'm short, so I don't have him this year. But I did send my guys out there on Friday to, to power wash. There was a little bit on the way to Belshib Row and only three docks with only a little bit of dropping. So I believe our goose dog trace is helping. of dropping, so I believe our goose dog Trace is helping, especially on the docks. I also have lights out there this year. Those gusty turn lights, I was going to remove them under the grounds, we didn't get to it, we've left them out there, and now I'm thinking about leaving them out there because that also might be helpful, so.
Great. Thanks, Mike. Any questions?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Harbor Committee, Mike?
Yep.
If there's any questions.
Sure. Thanks for your service. All of you. So, as Mike was saying, our geese mitigation efforts are still working on it, but all in all, they contribute to a healthier park and in an environment. We have, we thank 20 geese right now at the park. Rand Bachman and her dog Chase are doing a great job of chasing our geese away. And the yellow lights and longer lawn, nest disruption activities are paying off. The installation of new drain tiles in the park have significantly reduced the flooding, and it's leading to a more enjoyable park experience for everyone. The Arbor Day event was well attended, with games and giveaways and a lot of fun from families. Fourth of July event is being planned right now. We're seeking sponsors and volunteers. As Mike said, one pump stopped working on the pool. We're running on the second pump. The age of the pump has made it really challenging though to fix it. Mike's been running around and making a lot of calls, and he's got it, well, he's got it under control. But also, we need to get the word out, we still need four or five lifeguards. And as far, oh, Steve left, Steve's the one who filled me on what's happening with the plans for the pool and poolhouse. We did have a meeting, and we're starting to define the goals and objectives on improving the pool and the poolhouse. We're gonna put together a survey and a cost models on different things, and plans are being prepared for the park users and the village committees to provide input. That's it.
Any questions for the public? Questions? Okay. Thanks for volunteering. Jen, would you like to supplement?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. I'm pleased to be here tonight to share the first pool report of 2024. We're looking forward to the opening this Friday, May 24th. We're opening at 4 o'clock. So we're pretty well staffed, as Clyde mentioned, we're looking for maybe for five more guards, but we're doing all right. We have all of our managers, and I'm optimistic about adding a few more guards as certification classes come to a close, we can probably snag a few more. Weather permitting, we'll be open weekdays from 4 to 8, and on weekends and Memorial Day from 10 until 8, until school gets out. We had our swim team kickoff this Sunday, it was cut short, we had some quickly, quick-moving storms that came through, but people were able to grab ice cream and see friends and teammates before the inclement weather moved in. Pool practices begin on the 28th, and our first meet is June 19th, so I'll have the opportunity to talk to you at the next council meeting before that first meet to give you kind of an update on how things are going with our sharks. Also, on the 28th, we have water aerobics starting. That's the earliest class that we're beginning. It'll be Tuesdays and Thursdays for the whole summer, and signup has already started for that. The other activities that we offer, including early morning swim, youth swimming and tennis lessons, signup is slated for June 3rd, and I will get information out about what those classes will look like. We'll continue to use the Facebook page, the village website, flyers, postings, communications to be able to let everybody know what's going on, so encourage friends and neighbors to join the Facebook group, check the website, and look at flyers. As Mike mentioned, we have a few pool issues that I have my fingers and toes crossed, we're gonna be able to weather all of that. And to wrap up, I would like to recognize Mike and Friday Lees and the efforts of our DBW staff to get the park and the pool prepared for Friday's opening. Genuinely believe that it's like a huge asset to our city that we have such a beautiful park and pool, and it is largely in part to the DBW department. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about our upcoming season, and you'll see a lot of me over the next few months as we move through the pool season, so.
Any questions of Jen? Good. Thanks for your help, Jen. Don, do you want anything to add?
Sure, just a little bit. First of all, I want to thank Mike Wade, Jen Surratt, and Clyde Sutton for the elegant reports and for all the work and leadership that they've done, so thank you for all that. I also wanna thank the people that came to talk at the public hearing tonight. I see some of them have already left, I know it's a long meeting, so if you feel like you wanna stay for the rest, that's wonderful, but thanks for being part of the community and making your accounts. A couple of things, on June 8th, which is a Saturday morning at 9:00 a.m., we're gonna be having our yearly tennis tournament, so we'll post it on the website and Facebook page, so hopefully we can encourage people to compete for the cup. And also, we did participate again this year in the Department of Natural Resources through the state of Michigan for the Canada Geese Nest and Egg Miracle, and this year, we had zero nests, zero eggs, and we had, except for last year, we only won a nest, so, and that was even before Trace came on board. He started in February, excuse me, on April 16th, and the nests weren't there even before that, so I think his efforts are continuing to improve the geese mitigation, we thank for that and for their efforts, so that's all I'd add. Thank you again for your reports.
Thank you, Don. Harbor Committee, John?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Chairman Ritter says there is nothing new from last month, according to meetings, but we do have permanent poison out there, the red and the green, so now you can egress and enter the harbor as normal. But remember that folks leave the harbor half right away regardless of vessel size. And also try to use your VHF-9 or the phone to contact the harbor office versus honking your horn, because you'll get a much quicker response, especially if you use VHF-9 out there. And that's just for the swing bridge, or if you wish to purchase fuel, you can do the same thing with that. That's all there is.
How's our occupancy, John?
Not 100%, but so if anybody needs a well, send them our way.
Well, you know, might have just suggested, in the past, when we could not fill the wells, and residents came up and said, you know, I have a smaller boat. In fact, I was just talking to a resident who just moved into our block yesterday, and he said he has a 25-foot sailboat, but the only wells left are, you know, 40 and 50 feet. I think in the past, if there were, if those wells were filled, we offered a rate reduction, sort of charging for a 40, 50-foot well, we'd let them stay there for a year with a lower-rate well, like, we'd be accountable for the boat. So perhaps we could do that for empty wells this year if they're not filled.
Take our advice.
Okay. Thank you. Infrastructure, Bob?
We didn't have a meeting this month, we'll have one for next month.
Okay. Improvement Foundation, Sandra?
The Ghost Point Shores Improvement Foundation approved the purchase of bins and carts for the park and the City Hall. They also dedicated a plaque and a tree for Mr. John Cole. It took place before the, one week before the Arbor Day. A spring raffle raised $2,900, and there's plans for a party, a cocktail party around the pool, and it's basically in the planning stages right now, most likely it'll be in September to celebrate the 40th anniversary of the foundation.
Oh, wow.
It sounds like it'll be a nice, fun party, and Mike and Mr. Poloney are gonna keep the pool open for us.
Oh, wow.
After September. Yes, go ahead.
One other thing, we also dedicated $26,000 to the city for the design and layout plans for the new floor.
Oh, that's true. Yes.
Okay. All right, the next item, I don't wanna forget it. Helen, you wanna give us an update about Shred Day? It's wildly successful, I know. I drove by and I saw a line going out like half a mile, it seemed.
That doing was amazing. It's the first time ever that we filled up the entire truck, but unfortunately, we had about 20 cars in line waiting, and we had to turn them away. I apologize to anyone who was waiting in that line, because it was a long line. We didn't realize it was down past the yacht club. So we did very well. You know, it's a community service, and we get great help. Beautification committee, council people come, we just really, it's a nice community event. So Shred Day worked very, very well. Arbor Day, we had a lot of fun with the children. We did a, we did a little children's drawing for various prizes, and I was so pleased with the community. When, when one of the people would have that child's name drawn, everyone in this huge crowd of, I don't know, maybe 50, 60, 100 people applauded, cheered, just, the people at the gate couldn't figure out what all the noise was about, and it was about celebrating these little children. It was a wonderful event. So beautification is going very well. Just have a little quiz for you. Spring is sprung, brass is risen. I wonder where the beautification committee is. Tomorrow, we are planting at the park. We, Mary Nichols, I hope you got dinner tonight, Bruce, because Mary got home a little bit late.
She was wrong, buddy, and stiff.
We planted the trifle this afternoon, Mary. But anyway, tomorrow, we plant the park, 9:00 to noon, grab a trowel, a kneeling pad. You know, we just have a great time. And then on Thursday, we have an even better time, because we plant the municipal grounds, and we sit on the steps of the municipal building at noon, eating pizza and having a pizza lunch. So come join us, we are, we are a fun group to be with, we have a great time planting, and nobody can do it wrong. There is no such thing. So come out here and help us out.
Thank you for your service, Ellen. Thank you. Next item is Communications. I see Ted and Jewish in the back there, ready and anxious to give us a ETL report.
Mike? Good evening, distinguished mayor and city council. Continuing with the light side of the hour, we have the Communications Committee report. It is, I've been away, this is a video. I just wanted to say that in leading marketing communications teams for over 30 years, one of the things that I've always emphasized with my teams is to celebrate an event before we go onto the next event. As all organizations do, we plan these events, we have them, and move on to the next one. And we don't get a chance to put closure to the event and celebrate and enjoy the event. So, without further ado, I put this video together, it's also on Facebook, to celebrate the recent Arbor Day event that you just heard about, that was combined with the first of Easter then. This is why we have events in the city. These smiles that you're gonna see throughout the video is why we do this, and this is who we are, so. One more video, again, another showing title, gonna be really short. And the reason I wanna play this video is because I'm gonna embarrass the person behind me, who's also probably gonna kill me, but Jen Sarah is a true treasure. Bless her little heart, she is amazing at what she does, being a full director, but she's also got a second career ahead of her as a TV broadcaster. So I wanna show you the actual depth and breadth of her talent.
Good afternoon, Ghost Point Shores residents, happy Sunday. I'm Jess Terry, your pool director. As you can see, we are getting ready for our opening on Friday, May 24th. The pool will be open at 4:00 p.m. We will be open until 8:00 p.m. on Friday. On weekends, our hours will be 10:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. Also, on Memorial Day, we're 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And on weekdays, until school gets out, we're 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Tonight, we have our swim team ice cream social. We hold all of our sharks here from 5:30 until 7:00. And speaking of sharks, on Tuesday, May 28th, we will have our first pool practice. And also on May 28th, we will be starting water aerobics, which will run every Tuesday and Thursday from 6:00 p.m. until 7:00 p.m. this evening. This year, it will be run by Robin Harnett. If you are interested, please visit our website and see our social media pages, we'll know how to sign up. If you have any questions or concerns, please reach out at any time. We look forward to seeing all of you at the pool on Friday.
We call her One Take Jen. Yeah, that's One Take, so she's done a great job of this. It's content like this that has grown our social media, so right now, we're well over 1,600 people following us on Facebook. That's about 3,300 residents, and some of our residents are not even on Facebook, a lot of them aren't. So we're capturing a majority of the people who are on Facebook with this page we're posting daily with quality content like this. So I'm really happy and excited to work with Jen all summer, and thank you very much. And thanks, Michael, for helping us play these videos. So a couple things going on with Communications Committee, we're very busy. We have reviewed a proposal by a current Ghost Point Shores resident, who's actually a professional graphic designer, to create this mini branding proposal for the shores. And so why are we doing this? Well, it's needed. It's gonna do three things. One, it's gonna increase our professionalism across the board in all of our communications. Number two, it's gonna increase the quality of our communications all the way throughout. And number three, it's going to improve the consistency of the quality and professionalism throughout all of our communications. So we're very excited about that proposal, and moving forward with it and working on it over the summer, and hopefully we'll have things to show you in the next several months. And I wanna thank Danielle for all of her leadership and support of this proposal initiative. Branding is not new to any community, any organization, it's just new to Ghost Point Shores. Today in the news, Detroit Zoo just launched a brand new brand campaign that they're, you're gonna see a lot more on it, Sam helping to lead a brand campaign for Ghost Point School, public school system, so there's lots of branding going on everywhere in the shores as one entity that needs it. The newsletter is coming on great, we're almost done with the newsletter for June, and the featured person you've seen here before, her name is Prudence Cole. And one of the best parts of my job is to actually use my journalism skills to interview and write stories about our residents. And Prudence is a fantastic story, and she's a life coach. If you ever need someone to help you through your career or life, she coaches a lot of people, and from what I gather from my interviews, she does a great job. But the reason I wanted to bring her up is for one idea that she shared. So one of the questions I ask every person that I interview is, if you had a magic wand, what would be one thing you'd change about Ghost Point Shores? And her one thing is to create an official, formal awards program for volunteers. Now, we have a lot of volunteers, and we don't really recognize them officially. We do have a once-a-year luncheon that does a great job here in the hall of recognizing and thanking our volunteers, but we don't have any formal program to recognize them. Helen does an amazing job. Helen does an amazing job as a volunteer. There's also amazing volunteers all over our community. But we don't do a, we don't do a job the way our sister communities do in recognizing the quality and the work that our volunteers do. And that was Prudence's point. And so she asked me to share it with all of you tonight. So I'm doing my job and relaying that to you, that that's something for consideration to do. We have a terrific, outstanding staff that's done a great job and continues to do a great job in the city. And I would say the same thing about the volunteers who really put in tons of hours into the city to also make it an exceptional city. And I think that's it, Danielle. Is there anything else to add?
Just one thing. I verbally got together with everybody on the communications committee. There was thirty-two hundred dollars left in this year's budget, which basically is a sunset in June. And the graphic designer that Ted had approached was well over that amount. And I encouraged Ted to be frugal. It was very persuasive in keeping that into that budget. So we will not be tending to next year for the branding and the graphic designer. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And myself, Carol Plano is not here, and Jen all agreed. And of course, it was his brainchild, so he had a hundred percent support. Last thing I would like to say is, we previously had Ted Kuntzulich on communications committee. And I think it would be a delight if there was somebody else in the community that would like to come out and work.
Wonderful.
We have room for him.
Wonderful, thank you. So the only other one we had is the negotiations with the graphic designer occurred on Lakeshore this morning. While I was in the middle of my run, I got a phone call. And I took the phone call while I was running shoreside of Lakeshore, which is a little bit difficult to navigate. So I was doing double duty there, negotiating down as well as trying to catch my breath as I was running. That's it for me. Thank you all very much. You have to introduce any questions.
Well, Ted, the only thing I want to say is, not only, I always thank you for your service. I can't thank you enough. But I thank you for your energy. I thank you for your enthusiasm. I mean, you're like Helen, you know? How could you say no to Helen? How could you say no to Ted? I feel the same way. But, but that's what you bring to the table. And I just admire that. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Danielle, and being part of the, I was, I saw Carol at the function at Lockmore last. And she just loves it. She likes your leadership. She, she was the superintendent in school. You know, her husband was the former county manager, not many years ago. But she said, I just love it. And she loves you, you know, that when you, when you come to a meeting, you're gonna be uplifted. That's what she said. So thank you. All right, big old report.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, for having me. I know we said goodbye last time, and I was a little sad. But I'm glad I'm back to get to see you guys again and hear about all the wonderful updates going on in the community. Since the date of the city council meeting that was held on April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, the city attorney has been engaged in the following activities of the town of the city. General municipal matters, including consultation with the city regarding eight forty Lakeshore Road. There was a variance application for proposed swimming pool fence alternative. Council examined proposed ordinance amendments concerning the use of retractable swimming pool covers as a partial alternative to continued swimming pool fencing. Currently, we are engaging in ongoing discussions with the city planner and city management regarding potential engineering factors affecting the use of retractable covers. We've evaluated Public Media Freedom of Information Act requests for the City Department of Public Safety separation affidavits and empowerment affidavits. We've examined statutory bases for statutory exemptions from disclosure of city employees' personnel records. And we've communicated with the city and requesting party regarding the same. We've responded to the Michigan Attorney General in certain correspondence and notice regarding pending municipal prosecution matters. And we've consulted with the city regarding various other administrative and procedural matters. That is my update. Any questions for me?
Well, thanks. Normally, though, Brian wouldn't be handling anything from the prosecution standpoint.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. But you know, it must be simple. Any questions? Thank you for the report. Steve, benefits report?
Yeah, thank you, mayor and council. Really, I think I gave a little report on the pool meeting. So we did have our first pool meeting with our architects and pool company just to get the ball rolling, the first official meeting. It was really good. I mean, we had a great discussion, we gave some questionnaires. So now our job, we'll be meeting on a regular basis through June, I'm sorry, July second, when that'll be our final meeting. So we'll be fast-paced to get this done by July second. Then after that, they have a few weeks to deliver to us some sketches and pricing models and that type of thing. So we'll be reaching out to the council with some things, as well as the swim team, our committee, and all those finance committee as well. So questionnaires, thanks to take that process forward. I really wanted to take just a little thanks to my staff tonight. As you can see, they, they have worked diligently. Let me say this, I'll back up. If I seem a little passionate or intense on these issues tonight a little bit, I apologize. But I know how hard staff has been working. This, the water issue, this has been, I was here in the nineties, and I remember this being one of the top issues back in the nineties. That's how long these problems have been going on. I remember Mike Kenny getting thrown out of City Hall in Detroit because he was banging and turning tables over and over the water bills and the rates. So that's how far back he was. I know this has been an ongoing problem. So, you know, council, when I got here, council said, hey, we'd like to take a look at this. You know, really, nothing's happened over these years. And so we took a good look at it. We started on the water side of it, obviously, with the ordinance, which has worked well. Thanks to Kenny's team of enforcement, well, it's Mike's crew of helping the residents out when there's problems with their sprinkler systems. So we, it's been a team effort. We've got rave reviews from Cleveland on our, on our water ordinance and the enforcement of it. No one does this, they said. And they happen everywhere. And that's why they took two years before we could get a break, because they wanted to see results. Because in most communities, it doesn't happen. They pass these, and people still do what they want. So I know how hard we've worked on that. Dale's worked hard at getting these numbers and looking at alternatives with the cap and that. And I think everybody's staff and council as well can take a bow because I don't think there are any other communities tonight in our council meetings or last night that are saying that they reduced water rates by eight percent, sewer rates by twenty percent, and mileage rate by one point two percent. So I think that, I want to thank my staff because it's not me. They've worked hard. And we, we're up at night late, talking late, sometimes ten, eleven o'clock at night, talking about what can we do differently? How can we fix things? So we're working, we're gonna continue to work hard to address these issues. And like I said, if I seem a little attached, forgive me. Thank you.
Any questions, Steve? All right. At this point, old business, we don't have any new business. It's the Public Health Corrective Action Plan capital support.
So this looks familiar because I brought this to you three, four months ago to finish out this current fiscal year. And as I, oh, we said at that meeting, I was gonna bring another one for the fiscal year moving forward. So that's what this is. This is Continued Engineering Support for our cap dealing with the M L U and S E M S D. So this is, this is moving forward. This is the way it should be. I'm not entirely sure. We were kind of going on an as-you-go basis. And they really wanted to get a budgetary, budgetary year-to-year basis, which is the way it should be. So this helps us with budgeting. There's nothing different than the proposal that you saw a few months ago, but except for the entire next fiscal year. Is there any questions?
Any questions? If not, I need a motion to approve this, this action item.
I can.
Any further discussion? Not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, thank you, Michael. Public comment? We have any public comment? All right, council comment?
We've already said our.
So hello, everyone. To this honorable body, my name is Mary Waters. I'm an at-large city council member in the city of Detroit. I was sitting here listening to the discussion about water infrastructure and so forth. It would appear that we all across this region have those issues. And we certainly have that in common. I am a former state representative as well. Same legislative class as Gretchen Whitmer and some of the others, just to kind of give you the time period. So I wanted to come by and introduce myself to members of this body, as well as members of the community here in the village, and to let you know that I look forward to working with you in the future as your, your next U.S. representative in the thirteenth congressional district. I thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments? If not, council comment, John?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to welcome Officer Frantara to Ghost Point Shores. Looking forward to seeing him on his duties throughout the city, as well as all the other people. And also thank all the cheerpeople from Mr. Paloney, Mike Way. And they do, like you said, a great job. I appreciate your intensity. I'm an intense person. I think that's the way to do it, to get things done. But doing it a calm, collective way, and you'll do really well. So as far as I appreciate people doing public comment, Dr. Lee, Dr. Hanlon, Clyde Sutton, Dr. Fishman, and Mary Waters for coming up to the podium tonight. Thank you.
Okay, John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We talked a little bit about in our parks update about goose mitigation process. I can say that my son George and I were fishing on the harbor wall a couple of weeks ago on a weekend, and we had pleasure running into Trace. We came down the harbor wall, and George was asking, who's Trace? And why does he have this cool harness on him? Explained what Trace is doing and introducing Mrs. Bachman. And Fran was very gracious, and George wanted to put his fishing pole down and go chase geese from. So the three of them went off. And as I'm standing on the wall still fishing a little bit, I could see Trace would go the one way, and George would go the other, flanking move. But actively shoving those geese back into the water where hopefully they want to stay. So I was, it was, it was very neat to see Trace, our goose dog, in action, talking to Fran a little bit about the effort that she puts in on a volunteer basis of coming around two, sometimes three times a day, on weekends, almost every day. And hopefully, this catches us back up to where we were a few years ago. It's just, I wanted to thank Fran, if she was here today, for letting George help me at Saturday afternoon.
Thank you, John. Danielle?
I want to thank the dedicated staff at Ghost Point Shores from the Admin, D P W, and the P S A. And I really admire their energy and their dedication. I want to say what a delight it was. Like I said, I went out on a boat, our boat this past Sunday, to see friends and neighbors down in the marina and how nice it looked. Mr. Sutton, Mr. Nichols, several other people I've known on their boats. And it was just a nice early spring or early summer surprise. And lastly, I want to say, this is a great community. And there's nothing but really good news. Right? Our sewer rates are going down. Our water rates are going down. Our mileage is going down, and we have a budget surplus. So I believe that the staff is gonna follow up and try to reduce the water rates in some way or make it even more transparent for our residents. And for those that came with concerns, thank you for bringing them.
Thank you, Danielle. Uh?
Just, I wish to take, take any bets all this summer. Everything to be in plan by the parks, I would think. Take any, I think that's all.
Okay, thanks. John?
Again, as Dr. Seago did, I want to thank everyone for coming. I've been speaking today at the public hearing, and it was very much appreciated. I want to let you know that we hear you. The city manager hears you, or finance manager hears you, or D P W director hears you. I applaud their efforts on what they've accomplished so far to help us with our water sewer and make it more transparent and more affordable. And I also look forward to what Ted Kuntzulich talked about a little bit, the volunteers that we have here. Karen Hanlon had mentioned about maybe having this board committee that can help with local talent as volunteers in, gosh, engineering and finance and their law expertise and maybe, you know, just the problem-solving abilities to give us maybe a different, fresh perspective on alternatives to ADIS and our sewer and water projects that, that Kevin Hanlon asked the mayor to appoint a board committee that, in your words, I think to make things more equitable, which is, I think, very appropriate. So we look forward to that. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Sandra?
I just want to thank Mr. Paloney and Mr. Wade for patiently sitting down with me and other members of the council to explain how the Great Waters Authority sets water and sewer charges. They were very patient in explaining all the intricacies and how those charges are passed on to us. It was a great education. And I'm hoping that in our next finance committee, we can delve into it a little deeper. And we welcome anybody with ideas. And it'll be more like a little workshop where we'll be debating different ways of doing things. So that'll be June the fourth at nine A M. if anybody wants to attend. Thank you.
Thanks, Sandra. A few comments about myself. First off, I want to thank my neighbor Dan Stoll for volunteering or donating the T-shirts for the Arbor Day run. All the T-shirts for any of the events that, Ted, you got an ice cream one there. But they're all donated by Dan Stoll and his family's business. And he does it just routinely. He does it without being asked. And every time I see him, I thank him for what he's doing. I mean, again, this was what makes this community so special. I want to thank the finance committee. I want to thank, I want to thank anybody who came to the town hall. People that come here, again, there's a lot of passion. I've lived here twenty-nine years, and you can, this is the problem with the water and the sewer. And it's, it's a multi-year, it's a project. It's gonna require, it's gonna require a solution that, a very comprehensive solution. And when you look at it from the accounting standpoint, it seems like it's an easy matter. There's redundancies. We can remove some of the redundancies. We can get the economies of scale somewhere else. But when you actually then start looking at the corrective action plan, I mean, this is something that was forced on us. I was, I got a call from the chief legal officer for Wayne County asking where I was at because they had prepared a lawsuit. They were prepared to deliver it to me personally. And that's what led to the memorandum of understanding. And, you know, I don't want to say more than that because we're still talking about possible options or possible strategies. But as we come into the summer, I'm just thinking of all the great events that we had recently. At Ghost Point Yacht Club, we had Respect for Law, which honored the local public safety officer. It's always nice swearing in an officer who's much less than half of my age. And, you know, somebody young and vibrant, somebody energetic. And like I said, I know the chief, I'm stealing his words. But that's the best part of the job, when you see that. Our officers are up from fifteen to sixteen. You know, we, our budgets got reduced, our military got reduced. I mean, who's doing that? That tells me that our finance and administrator, starting with the leadership from Steve, going down, Mike's over there, sharpening their pencil, looking at costs, you know, with a jaw to the side, and determining, you know, whether, whether it's essential or not. And I mean, that's really what it comes down to. Anybody could, anybody could, anybody can balance a budget by cutting costs, eliminating people. But we're doing it without removing any service levels that the, that the residents are expecting. We added a police officer, again, a highly trained police officer today. He's starting with his duties and gonna be, I think they have a procedure like for his first six months or something. But, I mean, so we're doing it without reducing the service levels. We're making this an attractive place. Our house sales, I heard there were eleven homes for sale at Ghost Point Shores. Eleven? Eleven? Eleven hundred homes? So it's, I mean, that's incredible. I mean, I went to the mayor's prayer breakfast at Ghost Point Yacht Club, and our former neighbor Connie Ahy was the speaker. What a speech that she delivered. What a lesson in faith and very inspirational. If anybody heard it, or I think they published it in one of the local papers or something. It was that inspiring. But what she had gone through, and, I mean, I saw people in tears. It was really passionate. Everybody should be looking at their calendar and looking at the events again. Today, we moved the tennis tournament from June fifteenth to June eighth. Don had already indicated that. We have swim meets, we only have two home swim meets this year. There's three away ones and two at home. We got other activities planned here. They may change depending on how we handle the rest of the summer. But I'm very proud to be a part of this community. I'm very proud, you know, that I think the council, we work together, we're civil, we're respectful. We have, nobody does a town hall, nobody has a town hall that I, other mayors have said, why do you have a town hall? And, you know, the purpose is to meet people on a grassroots basis, meet people and connect to them in an informal environment. I mean, we were here from ten o'clock to almost twelve o'clock. And it's one way for people to tell us, you're doing a good job, but... And there's not always a but, but a lot of times, it's always that way. But, I mean, they're all looking to make this a better community. And again, I applaud everybody for being here over two hours, because we want a better community. As I've said before, this is a destination city. We moved here because we want to, and this is the end of, maybe the end of our world. Without ice cream, I'd turn this meeting. The next meeting is June eighteen. Again, I thank everybody for their attention.